Okay, it is 7 o'clock on Thursday, May 11th. This is the regular city council meeting for the city of Albernett. We will go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go ahead with the roll call, please.
Counsel Trump, Counsel Rosenberg, President. Counsel Scholz.
President.
Counsel West.
Here.
Counsel Myers.
Here.
Vice President, thank you.
With regard record, reflect that we do have a quorum to conduct business tonight. With that, are there any changes to the agenda? Do we want to call out the resolution number? Oh, never mind, you got it under new business. Is that the same as 16A under old business? It's all good.
Okay.
Okay. Any other changes to the agenda? I would seek a motion to approve the agenda. Moved by Scholz.
Second.
Seconded by Howard Myers. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Alright, at this time, we will open the public hearing for the FY '23 budget amendment. There's proof of publication in your packet. Clerk, did you receive any written or phone questions into the office?
I did not.
Alrighty. The proof of, or the reason for tonight's public hearing is that we do have to amend the FY '23 budget. Most of this is good news because it is due to revenues. So we added the $141,450 grant that we received from Lynn County for the City Hall project as part of their ARPA funding, is that what it is?
Yep.
So that's reflected under revenues. Chris, can you talk to the changes to expenditures? I believe it's just putting them in the correct buckets, right?
Yes, it's just moving those buckets around. So basically, one of the things we were looking at is, there was one area that we had gone over slightly. For our culture and recreation, we expended a little bit more than we originally planned. So we moved money around for that. And that's kind of the transfers in, transfers out. Represents that information. And then also, anything that we had to do with our debt service, transferring money in and transferring money out. So we have to report that when we do those kind of transfers, especially in situations where we're putting it into projects. For example, when we had to replace the water tower. That was one large expense that we didn't actually have blended it anywhere. We just took it out of our other funds.
You've got another additional $75,000 for other taxes, was that all income?
Line number six.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, off of my mind.
Okay.
I remember. That was the transfer for the water tower. Oh, $75,000, that was the, sorry. That was the fire truck, the new medical truck that we just purchased.
Oh, oh, yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot that was in this one.
So that was money that came in from the township?
Right, right, right. Thank you, sorry, I was thinking about the transfers.
That makes sense.
Nevermind, okay.
So if you look at ending fund balance, so I am on line number 28. We are increasing the budget by $399,500 for expenditures. But that's offset as the revenues also increased by $216,450. So we do have, we are extending the budget by $183,050. A lot of that would be the City Hall project that we got going this year. Any questions from council? Any questions from the floor? Alright, hearing none, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. And that moves us to Sheriff's Report. That is in your packet. So for April 13th through May 11th, the required 43 hours have been met. There were 18 calls for strength. Have that report. We don't have a deputy here tonight, so if you have any concerns, get those to Chris and we can pass those up the chain at the Sheriff's Office. And we'll move on to number seven, the Mayor's Report. I have just a few things tonight. First and foremost, I received an email from the Iowa League of Cities that they ran a writing contest for If I Were Mayor for a Day. And I wanted to congratulate from District 2, our very own Brianna Gage. She is a 7th grader here at Albernett and she won the writing contest for District 2. So that's pretty exciting. Yeah, we'll have to steal some of her ideas, I'm afraid. But she'll be recognized at the Capitol. I believe they have a ceremony at DuMonte, so excited for that. Congratulations, Brianna. And then, I also want to update council, thank you for the work on codification. Last meeting, we got that all passed through. We did receive the files from the third party that we were working with that helped us get all that straightened out. So we'll be updating the website very shortly to make sure that we have the updated code available on the website. So that has not happened yet, but that will happen shortly. And, oh, one last reminder, I did notice on my way just to the meeting tonight, it is mowing season. Please remember not to blow your clippings into the street. That all washes down into the sewers and makes a big mess. So please keep your clippings on the curb. If they do it up in the street, we ask that you blow them back into the yard or sweep them up. That's no fun to clean up wet grass in the sewers. Alright, and that is the Mayor's Report. Council, I'll start to my left with Counsel Myers.
Nothing.
Counsel West. Counsel Scholz. Six-foot leashes once in the margins of the. Well, okay. Counsel Rosenberg? We'll move on to citizen comments. So we have two types of comments in the city of Albernett. Those that are for agenda-related items and non-agenda-related items. We please ask that you state your name and address clearly for the record and there'll be a five-minute limit on comments. So at this time, are there any comments for agenda-related items?
I assume I'm non-agenda because I didn't call ahead. Is that right? It is.
Yep. Alright, hearing none, non-agenda-related items?
Okay, well, my name's Alan Ross and my physical address is 2853 Paris Road, Walker. But technically, from Albernett. We are, my mother owns the property here, East Town. Some of us here know that. Probably doped a lot on Chris here the other day. This has been going on probably five years, maybe a little more. The East Sewer Pond, the big one, the highest one, because we got land, 40 acres back there. For the last five years, it's been running over. I've, I don't know whether you, this has ever made you, Guy and I went, of course, he kind of got caught in the changing of the guard. And is doing it again. He tries to tell me there's nothing wrong, there's something wrong. We've been, I've been farming this over 50 years. I know when something's different. In the last five years, this thing's been running over. It's got a low spot on the, I'm going to call it the southeast side of the main pond. You go back there right now, you try to tell me it wasn't running over yesterday. It's a 4:30 today, yet it's still running over. Two weeks ago or whenever we talked, using the process of pumping it down. Well, somehow, and I realize you can't change that overnight. But I've never seen that thing at full before. In all the years we farmed that, here in these last few years, there's been four different times. You go back there, you think, I know these fields. That corner, there's water running across it. It's cut in gully, going down Long House and into Blackfords. I guess I want to know what changed. We talked to other towns growing. My guess, like we also discussed, that these dredge. Or, and I don't know the logistics or the mechanics of what you got to do to, when you pump from one to the other. But I know damn well it should not run over. It never used to run over. I mean, I can tell when I go back there, that thing is full-full. You can just tell that by visually. They've tried to patch it up in one spot over there. It was me, I have all three more loads of dirt there, maybe to keep it from running. Apparently, it's been doing it in winter also, because there's a pretty good gully starting back. You never used to have any water going across there. That whole bank of the pond is just saturated. But it's in an overflow situation, granted, we had, we had a lot of rain down here, we're trying to get that planted. I guess, Guy always would say, I'm sorry, you know? Well, why? I wonder why it's happening? Who's the technician? I assume he probably got the changing of the guard? Who's running the system now? Why is it so much fuller than it used to be? I guess, I'm not here to just jump down people's throats. But after about four times, you go back there and you can't. Two years ago, we couldn't plant that corner, come back, tried to patch it in. We probably won't be able to get there, depending on what the weather does. A year ago, this last fall, running off, went in Hydrus, there's water running down there. Couldn't do that then. Can anybody tell me why?
Can you, can you just show, show us on the map?
Did you ever go back and look at it? You told me it wasn't running over. Well, it's running over.
Is this?
Can you show us, show them where you are talking?
On the right hand, right hand.
Where's the sewer pond?
Alan, look on the right hand of the map.
Oh, okay, there we go, that. Okay, yes.
So where exactly?
Okay. Right there. Because we got 40 acres back here.
Is it kind of in the middle of the west side?
Oh, it's further south than straight east. You know, you can't be, I bowled.
On that west, west side?
No, east side.
East side, yeah.
East side. Runs, runs down across.
South half of that?
What's that?
Like on the southern half of that?
Southern, well, it's right there.
Okay.
Right, about right there. There's, I mean, they patched up, you see there's rock there. And Guy said they had, and what, yeah, I mean, you get these, like, well, the first day I talked to you, granted, we had that 40 mile an hour northwest wind, there's whitecaps out there, it's still laughing at it. But yesterday, sure as hell, we had an east wind. And it's still running over. Are you still pumping it down?
We are, but we're doing it to the DNR regulations with that cell. I have talked to the affidavit operator about if we can release more. He's talking to the DNR to try to get that down faster on that site so that we can see what you're talking about for this part right here. Because we need, because remember, we talked about, is there maybe something a break in there that we can't see?
No, we're just running over the top.
I understand, but we've talked about that and that's what we were trying to look at.
I mean.
Is we went around the perimeter and we're trying to see exactly. At the time, we looked, there wasn't anything, but we have planned something this week.
I went out 4:30 today and it's not much, but it's still running.
And Alan, I believe you, it's, we got a, like I said, I'm working with the affidavit operator now right now to try to see where that low spot is.
I'm not here to cause any trouble, but after four times a charge, I guess, it should happen. It never used to happen. Something's different.
Well, and here's, I will admit, I'm not as familiar with the system as I probably should be. So this is in a different place than where we discharge, is what you're saying. This is.
Yeah, it is just over full. There's a lane that's.
It's the top of the hill, basically.
Oh, yeah. I mean, if you get over the top and it still don't, water runs downhill.
Is this what you're talking about on the, is?
Yep, you can see that trail. There never used to be a waterway there, used to be never, because I don't drain any, well, I want to say surface water. Right there where you got that orange thing, I would say that's, that's where the, because they put some rock there, tried to build it up.
So just as, you can see the dirt.
See where it runs. And this winter, it must run over in the winter too. Because this, it's cut pretty, I mean.
Well, unless it's plumb full, I mean, do we have a leak?
That's what, that's what they're.
Well, that's what I'm trying to.
It's going to take some time.
But when it's going over the top, that's not a leak.
Yeah, but that's what I was saying, we're trying to ascertain right now if there is something further down. Because we're draining, that, this, the draining we're doing is not that, that we're draining into the other two ponds. So I'm trying to ascertain exactly where that is coming from.
And why are levels too high? It's plain and simple.
Yeah, so the good news is, we're in a position where we've got fresh eyes. Both Chris being new, he's going through all the classes, he's learning and asking questions. And we do have, as he's mentioned, we have an affidavit operator that's assisting until Chris gets certified. So it sounds like they're going to take a look. Let's keep this as something, I mean, we may need to, if we have to call on the DNR. We've also got it, we've got it within the agenda to start talking about dredging. I hear that it's full. But we've, we've done some studies. We had a engineering firm come in and do a capacity study on the lagoons. And they said we have plenty of capacity. I'm hearing your experience, so we'll, we need to, we need to marry the two and find out, do we have a problem? Or is it, is it something structural or is it something systemic where we need more capacity? So.
I mean, I know you can't turn that off overnight, that amount of water. It's not like filling a 500 bucket and it starts running over, you shut it off. I mean, that don't happen, but I think you regain an odd, there's, I mean, like I say, I don't know the mechanics of how that works either. But I do know, over the years, I go, I mean, you can just go back there and you, well, when you, when you can easily see the ducks floating across, the geese going across, and many times it gets down lower. I just don't understand why it's so damn high.
Yeah, and it could be a matter of dredging.
You're trying to tell me, well, we've had a lot of snow. Well, unfortunately, we have not had it. This is about as easy a winter as you can get. I mean, it's not, I don't think it's anything out of the sky. And granted, you had three inches of rain here the other day. Essentially, that's going to raise it three inches, you know? It, it must be something slower. When, I guess, I want to ask, you pumped something back in that at some point?
No.
That's all gravity.
It's gravity, that's why I'm saying it's gravity-fed. And where that line is right now is easily a foot lower than what it normally is. So as it's going down, it's feeding the other two ponds. But we're not allowed to drain that top pond. We can't just open the floodgates and drain it because it has, there's a system, this is the way the system works. It has to go in a slow succession down to the other two ponds. Otherwise, it would flood the other two ponds and bulldoze over. So.
What dictates when you do that?
We can, I was going to say, we can only do it so often.
The DNR dictates when, when we can do it and how.
Even if it's running over?
That benefits for him.
They don't care if it runs over.
Then we need to.
They do, but.
Chris, then we do, we can apply for what we call an emergency discharge. It has happened. So what I'm saying is, give my two operators a chance to drain it down. See what's in there, if dredging it's going to gain us some capacity. And then again, we've got fresh eyes coming from an experienced operator out of Center Point. So let us take a look. I hear you and I'll make sure that we address it.
I mean.
But we do have regulations. We, we can't just open it up. We'd have to apply for emergency drawdown from the DNR.
We all know the DNR can be a pain in the butt. That's all there is to it. I can't imagine them, I mean, it, it just can't be like right now. It's not bothering me, it's, that's not raw sewage going there. But at some point in the past, there's been some pretty icky stuff come down through there because you can see, catching any of those bean ground or corn stalks. You know, the leftover, kind of like mossy, there's the sheath of stuff left in the field. I thought, oh, I'm sure the DNR probably, you know, and they're, you know, they're worried about a cow peeing in a, in a creek, you know? And I'm thinking, I'm not here to get anybody in trouble, I'm just, it's getting to be kind of an inconvenience.
And I hear you, and I'm saying, we are in a great position to be able to take a look. So we've got.
I mean, you've been here a long time, you've, a good share of people here don't know me, some do. But you've been here a long time and it's just kind of, I, I do know when something has changed. And it is full, it is full-full.
I hear you. Let us, let us take a look if it's something that we can just fix with a dredge.
How many times a year do you do it then?
Twice. Two times a year, unless we have to do an emergency drawdown. So we have a spring and a fall.
Well, I recommend, you know, I'd love, just love it to be so it don't hinder us with planning or.
Yeah, we are, we are required, we are only given a certain timeframe. I'm not exactly sure what that, what that is.
Oh, they set the timeframe too.
Yes, yeah, yeah. We are, we are held between certain dates where we can start and we have to be finished by. And so Chris can get you all that, he should, he should.
Is there any way of monitoring the flow of how fast it's coming out of there right now?
Well, that's what we're doing right now, so.
Because it just seems like it's slower than, oh, hell.
So, we'll definitely raise it with Kenny and then.
Oh, Kenny Shrews?
Yep. Yeah, he's our affidavit operator right now.
So that's who I'm working with.
And then, worst case, if we need to call back in, HR Green, they did the assessment on the lagoons for us. But maybe we can, if it's empty, that's a good time to have them, them come out and take a look as well. But we'll get you an answer now and we'll, we'll figure out what's going on.
I would love for you, I can, sure, I can show you. It's not all that hard to walk up there and look. I know, right now, it's just a little bit trickle.
Now's a great time.
If it goes dry out, I mean, the whole, the thing is, the whole bank, you know, there's nice grass back there. It's just saturated and it gets down to the fence line and, you know, works its way. It's a pretty little stream right now, but at some point, it's been moving quite a bit of water. I don't know when, I'm certainly not down here every day looking at it.
Staring at it.
Especially in the winter.
Well, we'll do our best to get you some answers and hopefully it's something that we can.
I appreciate your time. I just, like I say, I'm not here, I didn't want to have to do this.
Well, no, it's, we wouldn't know. I mean, if you didn't tell us that there's a potential.
Guy, I know, Guy's been here quite a while. I, I don't really, I'm guessing it probably never got forward to do you, it's just something.
It's, it's nothing I recall hearing, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to make any assumptions, so when, when.
The other day, it was just the final straw that broke the camel's back. Went back there and looked, damn, it's doing it again, so.
Yep, yep, we'll definitely take a look, so I appreciate you coming.
Okay. It's okay if I stay or?
You're welcome to stay, absolutely.
Might learn something.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Any other non-agenda-related comments?
I can just mention, as a landlord, we had our first inspection this last week and it went well. And I didn't know if there, if the city got any kind of report from Lynn County.
We did.
And that will, each time there's an inspection done, you'll get a report from.
It tells me everything that was wrong and then it also prints out a certificate that says you were approved. I put that in your file and you're good to go. But I, I appreciate you coming and telling me the experience because I've been asking. And so far, they've gone really well and, you know, simple fixes. So I'm really glad to hear that that's gone, gone great for the landlords. So thank you.
Went well for us, thanks.
Awesome.
Awesome, thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to written reports. First is from the Fire Department. TJ, you get to be our designated representative again. So if there are any, I do actually have one and a half questions. Did the, did the pump on the brush truck get repaired?
Yes, they got replaced, yes.
Everything working?
Actually, perfect at the time.
I was going to say, I saw the, saw a page come out, it's like, oh, I hope we have the brush truck.
Yep, yeah, it's up and running, works great.
Okay, perfect. And then, we were getting a list of calls. Did Ron send that over, the roster of calls and who attended?
Zoomed the email that came out.
Did I miss it then? I think I have access to it on Drive, so I can pull it, but. Well, he was giving us exactly who attended each one.
Oh, no, I did not get that yet, so he may just, yeah, all I've got is that the four.
Those are their minutes, yeah.
Yeah, the ones under minutes, I got, I did not give the other one.
I'll follow up with him. He may think we're pulling it since we, I created it on Drive, so.
And that's fine. I can pull it from Drive.
Perfect. No, those were my, my questions.
The only other thing is, we got the, as we talked about earlier, we got the SUVN. And everyone's pretty excited about it, so it's being, I think it's being wrapped, do you know, Chris?
Yeah, the Banta Con just talked about getting it wrapped in short order. And so we've got that for our next set of bills. So, and then they're looking at getting the outrigging, they're getting a quote for the outrigging to go in the backend to be able to transport and do all the maintenance that they need to do.
That's exciting, long time coming.
Yeah.
So all the bays are full now, right?
This is correct.
Yeah.
Any other questions for TJ? Move on to Public Works.
Yeah, so all of our tests have been good, you know, as the reports were stating. The grant for the generator has been submitted, so we're waiting for that. That will give us the generator that will go for both the firehouse and well 3, if we're able to get that to go through.
Do we remember what the response timeframe was on that?
About two months. So yeah, other than that, there's really nothing else. Well, we'll talk about the stuffer and well 3, so we'll talk about that in a minute.
Any questions on city, on Public Works? Move on to City Clerk Treasure Report.
I don't have anything to add. Do you have any questions for me?
I do not. Any questions for Chris? A few things in this report that are also on the agenda, so we can talk about those when they come up. Reminder, we do have a regular election in November, I believe. Paperwork, I looked it up the other day, you can start filing paperwork in August, so keep an eye on that timeframe.
I've already filed all the paperwork that needs to go to the auditors, so if that's, that's a done deal.
Candidates can start filing their nominations, their papers, their petitions in August.
Correct, so if you want to join council.
Anything for City Clerk Treasure? Alright, with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I do want to make one note on the consent agenda, is you will find updated minutes from what was published in the paper. So we updated, it would have been the first item under new business with the digital sign. I want to make sure that those were updated due to an inaccurate summarization of the discussion items. So we have removed a couple of sentences because the discussion is captured in our videos. So we have summarized the request and the action taken. So that update was made to the minutes and we will publish a correction once these are approved tonight. But otherwise, any questions on the consent agenda? Otherwise, I would seek a motion to adjourn. Moved by Rosenberg, seconded by West. Any discussion? All of the favors say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. New business, 15A Discuss Printer Services to Gorgon Lynch. So this was actually on last month's agenda. But we asked Chris to go back and get us additional information. So you do have the contract in your packets. It is a five-year contract. We asked Chris to go back and get, I think it was two and three year, I believe. And in speaking with him, it was pretty darn expensive when you muller the term. I'm sure you have, I don't have the exact numbers, but... And really, especially now that we are all digital with our packets, the amount of printing, I guess we do water sales and those types of things, but we don't do an extraordinary amount of printing.
And Chris, did you also say they replaced that and get the five years?
Yeah, so basically what it is, is one nice thing is neighbors insurance uses this group and they're very happy with their service. They have a four-hour window, so if I put in a submit complaint or I need something fixed, they have four hours to get here to fix that. Additionally, after five years, they will replace and update the copier that we have with a brand-new copier that is, that's updated and the same stuff. So, we constantly would, you know, after the five-year contract, we just get a brand-new, you know, up-to-date printer, which is really nice. Again, looking at the overall cost, the fact that this thing does have the ability to copy so many documents at once, I think it was like 239, was what the guy was saying. And then that goes straight to the computer. This whole stack of, you know, mess that we have can now be, you know, processed so that we can get organized, so that we can then digitally put all our files instead of having to rely so much on cabinet space. So, I mean, we were with the previous, previous group for, since, thank, 2017. I mean, it's over five years.
And we get zero service from them.
And I, and I can't get, I can't get anybody to get out here. The toner's down. I can't get, they, I can't get the thing to talk to my computers. It's, what are we doing? So, and again, the savings is only 500 or so over a year, but to me, for what we'll get in return, I think it's worth it and I recommend that we move forward with it. So basically I'd be asking council if I'm allowed to sign the contract so that we can partner with Gordon Flutch to get a new system and a new printer.
I would seek a motion to move our printed services to Gordon Flutch for a 60-month contract at $127.13 per month. So, moved by Myers, second by Trump. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed nay, motion carries. Alright, discuss grade work quotes for new city hall. So this is multifaceted. We are requesting some grade work around the back of the building to add...
A parking lot for employees and to give additional space for people to park in the event that we have multiple people show up to city hall for meetings.
Add some local parking and employee parking, uh, but also primarily you'll notice that on the north side of the building, we did add a new door. And it sits quite a ways below grade, so we need to do some grade work in order to make sure we're not gonna get water infiltration into that door.
So...
That is also included.
So we have a couple options. Option one, and then we've got the door up here so everybody can see it. This is where that, that grade is coming down. It's too low, okay? This is what it looks like from the road, so you can see where that surface line is gonna meet there. Now, there'll be a threshold here, but that threshold is not tall enough to be able to get any water that pools up here. So, option one, which was originally provoked, proposed, was to cut the door, which is a seven-foot door. We cut it about three to four inches and then we put in a step. Now, Garmin would do that work. If we do that, then that does raise the door above the line that we need and we do not have to worry. All we have to do is level this out and then grade it in such a way that the water flows backwards.
We've not cleared that with the county because in, in the research I've done, you have to have a seven-foot door to have it be fire access, so I don't believe we can and I don't wanna bury the frame on that, on that door, so.
Okay. So, option two was to, um, go ahead and basically grade all of this, which means they've gotta come in and they've gotta go down about, cause there's, there, we've, there's only like a one-inch fall on one side and then there's a five-inch fall on the other. So we don't have a lot of room to go. There's no drain on the other end that we can drain into like cap into, so we could either go to the sewer or storm sewer, or we could go to the back, one way or another. So option two was to grade it all the way back and then try to get it to flow one direction or another. The difference in the price to do that is whether or not we add here, right here, a drain that would go down and out to that green space in the park. And then grade the rest of it one way or the other. Or we add a drain there that goes into the storm sewer. So that's option two and three.
Yeah, I, I think we're also getting some additional quotes. It's like, oh, I see them in here.
The next quote that you see from Tim, it says Dan Sherman, but it's actually Tim. This was to put in a six-by-eight concrete pad here. That six-by-eight concrete pad would then have a two-foot retaining wall on either side and come around. If we do that, then we can also add a drain and pipe that out. And drain removal asphalt pad in the back of the rear and installation of drive and parking above north and west sides of the building. So that quote that is there is to do all of that. So the two quotes we have is from Hanley and Dan Sherman. Hanley did note that there is electrical wire that runs from the building to the city sign. Electrical wire would be to be relocated and re-dug. So it's a private line, so we have to add that into our thoughts when we're, we're doing this, cause that line's not very deep.
They, uh, they look at all about piping into that drain that's in the middle of the bay right there, of that last bay.
I don't think that comes through the wall.
It doesn't come through the wall.
This is groundwater. It's groundwater we're trying to get rid of, so that won't do us any good. Essentially, it's runoff, so if we got a rain, it's gonna run straight into that door. So we're just trying to get the water away from the door.
And we can't brick the door up because we don't have the brick. So... The reason this also creates an issue is because the space next to it is, um, that, that green space that we have with the sign and everything. And, um, I have been receiving complaints that that area does need to be fixed up, that people wanna kinda say go pack together or whatever. Wondering whether we're getting trees in there, whether or not we're gonna be putting anything in there. Again, I understand that we're not really using this, this road or whatever right now, you know, as far as affecting our build on city hall. It's, it's not affecting it, but it is affecting the area around it. So I'm trying to, to feel all that as well.
On that note, I mean, we need some understanding that it is still a construction zone and we're working through things. Chris, I'm gonna take this off, offline, so I don't, I won't expect any action on this tonight. I think you and I need to come up with if the best solution is retaining walls are great and then we can get quotes from there, cause essentially we don't have an apples-to-apples quote for either of those solutions, so. We'll continue to work on this, but just know that that is the reason that there's still plywood next to that door and can't install the door until we know the direction that we're going with the grade work. And we'll try and come up with something quickly enough that it won't impede. I know we've, we've gotta get moving before it gets too hot if we're gonna do anything with the green space, but let's make sure we're making the right decision there, so. We will come back to everyone with further solutions there, so more to come on the grade work that needs to be done. If you have any ideas, pass them to Chris.
Yeah, or any...
It's okay, it's... 15C, discuss quote to patch a pothole.
The number that I want you to look at is not the bigger number. It's a 7,410. This is to do the intersection of Main Avenue, Roosevelt East Side of the main, approximately 1,500 square feet. Kushner has, this was put into motion prior and this was a conversation that was had by the Morrison Company prior.
Oh, that's, this is the driveway in Morrison?
Right. Correct. This, so this goes into that ball field, it goes into that area. It is bad. It needs, we need to start working on it. I am in, came in in the middle of this discussion, but I can tell you that they are requesting that we do something soon. I did go look at the area and noticed that, like I said, there is several large potholes going, going into that area. So this quote would basically, I did confirm to Kushner that they could get on it right away. This would just take care of that one issue. They, I do have other proposals for other streets with these, um, just in general with the street patching. And we can discuss that at a later time, how we wanna move through that and which streets we wanna make priority. But, um, that's kind of where I'm at right now as far as getting quotes and proposals and trying to get some of the, uh, the street fixes done.
I'm just, sorry, I'm bringing up these, is that us or is that a private driveway?
The part that needs to be fixed is us. It's, it is our easement, so we do need to...
How far do they go back?
So I'm just...
They go all the way back to the ends?
It's 15, 60 square feet, so we're looking at, is from the beginning front and then back behind the bus bar.
It's just the back corner of the bus bar. The school owns the majority of the drive.
Could be you, okay. I'm just saying, I thought it was clear.
That orange corner.
Right.
Touchscreen?
Yes.
Sorry, there's a touchscreen. I didn't mean to do that. That orange corner is...
That triangle?
That's the school property.
Oh, so we've only got, we've got a few hundred feet or a hundred feet or so.
Just the back edge here. Sorry, I'm a visual person, so.
How far back do they go, you think, though?
Down the street?
Yeah. You measure it real quick?
Seventy feet or so, roughly. I don't think we'd have to go that far though, cause it transitions to, we'd have to transition to the driveway.
Yours got 15, 1500 square feet.
It's 70 feet long. I, I didn't know the area.
So it's only 70 feet long?
Yes. See how fast I am with this tool? Yep, approximately. I came up with 16, but that's pretty rough. So, yeah, that's about right. I do remember Guy talking about this as well. So you're just looking for action approval on the 7,410?
Correct.
Motion by Bozenberg, second by Shaun's to approve the quote from Kleesner for $7,410 to replace the intersection of Main Avenue and Roosevelt Street on the east side of Main Avenue. Any further discussion on that?
Do you have a quick question? Is that gonna be rock button back down or is that actual asphalt?
That's asphalt.
Okay, I just wanted to, send that as well.
You go pay out, we can, we can see there.
Correct.
That's all, I'm sure, okay.
Uh, mayor, can I make a request? Deny me if not, but, um, I know originally we had moved the encroachment permit down, but then now we've got more going on. Is there any way we can address that now?
Well, we'll finish this. I got a motion to do it. But after that, yes.
Thank you.
And I'm sure Kleesner's aware, they'll need to work with the business owner and the school to make sure they have access, cause it is, you know, we're coming into baseball season, so I don't know how happy they'll be about that, but there, can we find out by line how long the project will take, just so we can inform. I like, I wanna be their partner. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Alright, we're gonna make a slight adjustment and we're gonna jump to item 15F, which is discuss the encroachment permit request for Beth Bookin, who happens to be here tonight. So this will be page... You know, we're gonna have to do some scrolling. It's 43. So this is, Beth's request is one that preempted, um, squeaking in that encroachment ordinance with the re-cutification. Uh, essentially there is a drainage easement that runs along the east side of her property. There are no utilities. It is all drainage. All the utilities are on the street side. So they are looking to place a sh, uh, manufactured shed in that area. It is still, so our ordinance, excuse me, for accessory buildings, they have to be three feet off each property line, so they'll still need that, so they're not looking for variance. But what they, it will encroach on the drainage easement. But there's no pipes or anything back there, so it's just an open air.
Is that a drainage easement for future construction?
I believe so, yes.
And what happens in the event suddenly we get to the point where we need to put pipes through there and what happens to the building? Does it move within 30 days? I don't, I'm gonna cross that here and I'd like to get, um, speed.
Absolutely. So our ordinance, uh, does state that I believe we can give, if we give 60 days' notice. So no encroachment is permanent. The, the application is actually for annual. It renews automatically every year unless we have a need to, to use that easement, in which case, yes, we would give them notice. Uh, I've talked to Beth, you're, you're welcome to speak up. The shed that they're getting is on skids, so it would be easily moved. If needed.
Are you putting a cement pad down first?
No, we have rock, there's a pile of rock there right now. We're waiting to, of course, Beth has had to watch it or look at it for the last two months. We're waiting to shovel it out till we know where to, to put it. So nobody will have drainage rock underneath it.
Are there any requirements in how close to a portable building to be to a property?
Three feet, yeah. Yeah, I, I read our, our code a few times. Yeah, no, so they don't need a variance. They'll be more than three feet off of each property line. It's just, it will sit within this easement. I'm gonna be honest, I'm just fully transparent. I am the property owner to the north of this property and I had no idea there was an easement back there. So the only reason this came up is they put in for their building permit and the Lynn County flagged it. So again, it's not anything... So again, it's not anything, there's no running water there, it's not anything that they're going to impede the flow of water. I believe it is just for future planning. But I don't see any reason why they shouldn't be able to utilize their yard now, and then in the future, we work together. Again, we've got the protections in the ordinance as far as how we go about that, so...
If it's slat, if it's on slats, on top of rocks, it's still going to drain pretty well.
Also that.
So...
If it's blood, it's your fault.
Notice.
I don't see why not, I'm ready.
Then I would seek a motion to approve the encroachment permit application for, I think I know your address by now, 325 Donald Drive.
So...
I hear a motion by Shans, second by Trump. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries, and you have some work to do, so...
Awesome. Hey, thank you, guys, for your time. I appreciate it. I'm going to end my kiss base walking, but thank you, guys. Have a great night.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, for the adjustment. We will jump back up to item 15D, which is the FY23 budget amendment. So again, we have a public hearing, we stepped through everything. I believe we answered any questions. I like to do all that upfront. The public can ask questions. I'm scrolling.
This is not...
I think this is going to...
That's what, yeah, this is, you just have to approve it. There's no, no page associated with this.
Approve the FY23...
Motion by Bozenberg to approve the FY23 budget amendment?
Second.
Second by, was that West?
Yeah.
Second by West. Any further discussion?
Need to roll call.
Thank you for the reminder. Hearing no discussion, we'll go ahead and do a roll call.
Council Trump, aye. Council Bozenberg, aye. Council Shans?
Aye.
Council West?
Aye.
Council Myers?
Aye.
Motion passes. 15E, discuss MSA quote to repair sniffer modules.
Okay, so, yeah, I know. Learn all kinds of things wearing this public works hat, by the way. So right now, there was an issue, I got a call from the sheriff's office at well three at 10 o'clock at night, because there was an alarm going off in well three. The sniffer module detects the amount of chlorine that's inside that room, and in, just like anything else, it can go bad. So apparently, at this point in time, we have a possible sensor that may have gone bad. But then on top of that, this thing has to be recalibrated. Nobody knows how to recalibrate it, and so I called several places, finally found the people that made this. They directed me to somebody else, because the units are now obsolete. We are required to have them because we're used, we use chlorine gas. And chlorine gas, as you know, is very deadly if you just walk in on a room full of it. The sensor is malfunctioning right now. At the current time, what I've got in place is no one is allowed in there, you know, into that room, as it's just a safety precaution, but the sensor is, has been turned off at this point, because otherwise it'll just keep alerting out, and there's nothing we can do to shut it off. So I reached out to this group, this is called the MSA Safety Company. They can come out, replace the sensor, they can train me on how to recalibrate the units, and then, because we do have two units, we have one there, we have one at the shop, so one at well one, and then one over here. And then after that, I'll have a contact that should I have any other further issues, because I do have to get, like, what's called tester canisters, to do the calibration, I do have to purchase those from them. And then, so once we, once we do that, we can, we can move forward as far as making sure these safety features are correct and in place, and they're working as they should. This is the cost, the initial cost for this individual to come out. Unfortunately, there are no other quotes for this. This is the only company that does this.
Well, remind me, we looked at replacing...
It's $12,300 to replace one.
But that's what I was wondering. But what are we looking at, what page are we looking at?
42.
Sorry, it's up, yeah, I got the...
We jumped, sorry.
Okay, we're getting close to, I mean, that's, that's my question, is if we fix it, how would we chase money out of that hole?
Well, I mean, considering how often, I mean, I don't know when you got, when did you build well three?
Been there, I believe, since I lived here, so 15 years.
Okay, so for 15 years, that thing has not, yeah, either we've not had a problem, or it's been, I don't know, not working correctly, I'm not really sure, but for 15 years...
I'm going in, yeah.
I believe so, yeah. That implies, guys. That implies.
You know, I guess, you wonder why they put in that kind of system, another safer system, telling some things, I guess.
So...
Yeah, to replace the entire sensor unit, it was like $12,000.
Yeah.
We've got three of them.
We've got two.
Two.
The other one still, the other one still works. I did check that one the other day with the instruction manuals that I found in the bowels of the pile cabinet. So, I mean, you know, that one, we've got okay right now. I will have them look at both while he's here, as they just, as they, let's make sure we're okay, but that one at well three doesn't need to be replaced.
Is this quote just to replace the one?
That is to replace the one and train me on how to calibrate the machine, so for the cali, because once you, once you fix the sniffer, you then are required to calibrate it, so that it knows what it's detecting.
And this is a direct replacement, so the two systems will still be on the same sensor, right? Like, we're not putting in a different...
No, no. So the ones, the one unit is at well three, the other unit is at well one.
Right, they'll be, the sensors will be the same. We're not putting in a new, something different, that now we've got to calibrate them using different canisters?
No, no, no. Oh, I should have just said, no, 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 yeah. It would be, it would just be the one sensor at well three that would be replaced. I'm just going to have them look at the one that's at well one. But yeah, the canister, the canister we use, uses on both systems.
So it's the training and everything covers?
Yeah, it converses on either side.
Okay.
Not much choice, and we need it for safety for these days.
Right.
I move we go ahead and purchase this.
Motion by Trump to accept the quote from MSA to repair and train on the sniffer modules.
Is it 2556?
Yes, 2556. Thank you.
Yes, I gave it $12,000 to him. We had one problem, where I've been, at least 16 years. It's pretty safe, but just...
Yeah.
There it is.
I got a second by Bozenberg. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Item G, resolution 2023-9, City of Albert Net Personnel Policy Handbook. This is page 49 of your package. So this, Chris and I have completed the work on the handbook. We've brought everything up to, up to snuff. We've added several sections, we've added information about eligibility for Cobra. We, the biggest change for you guys to be aware of is we did, we are recommending, and it is in the handbook as it is today, the changeover from vacation and sick time to one bucket, which is just paid time off. Takes a lot of risk off the city, it is easier to manage, because you're only pulling out of one bucket. Chris doesn't have to ask, well, were you sick? Or was it a doctor's appointment? So we stay away from all of that. We did also remove the probationary period, so they will start earning PTO immediately. I wasn't at Will State, we have information in the handbook about being at Will, so the probationary period really didn't serve anything, because we, we can terminate at any time for cause, so...
And carry over vacation time as...
There is a limit, so I don't remember off the top of my head what it is.
I mean, it's not, it's not, it's not forever. It drops off after a year or...
It actually, it actually encourages, encourages a system for people to make sure they take paid time off.
So I believe for the first year, they get two weeks, so they can carry over, well, they wouldn't have much to carry, the first two years, they get two weeks. They're allowed to carry over 150%, so they, if they didn't take any, they can carry over up to three weeks. But no, it won't just endlessly accrue.
Right.
So to Chris's point, it actually encourages them to take it, because they'll start losing it, it just, they'll no longer have paid time off. So what this resolution is stating is, we are asking that this version of the handbook will then supersede any previous versions of the handbook, as well as any other personnel policies. We know that some were in place that never made it into the handbook, and they were established via resolution, things like the two-hour minimum on weekends, that we're not doing that anymore. It actually violates employment laws, because we're not paying for time worked, we're just paying for this time. So that resolution is to override any previous versions of the policies, as well as anything that was established via resolution. So we will start with a clean slate with this handbook, and make sure it stays up to date.
And it's effective as soon as it passes?
It's effective immediately. Okay.
But PTO was a July 1, right? So we were going to...
Right. The handbook, all this is stating is that the handbook is effective immediately, which means the handbook is stating that July 1 we're...
Oh, that's right, I built that in.
Yeah, you built that in, so it's, yeah, we, so the handbook's effective immediately, the policies will come into play when they are slated to come into play.
I outsmarted myself.
Yes.
So with the PTO, we do have, so if they're hired before July 1 of this year, essentially, Chris, he'll, he'll have to exhaust his...
I don't have much left, so...
Sick and vacation time. Essentially, we're going to get out of that pool, so he's got to use that before he can even start using his PTO.
Yeah, right.
So we do have that policy, yes, effective immediately. This will help with the hiring update that we get as well.
Right. And that's why we get it to be effective, right, so that we can then proceed to hire people.
I move we adopt resolution 2023-9.
Motion by Trump?
Second.
Second by Shans. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion carries.
And does this have to be a roll call, because...
Only if it's money, it's being expended.
I have to say, because it's personnel.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ordinances or money, generally we will roll call.
Just want to make sure.
All right, 16 old business, we can actually skip item number A. We did that already. So item B, hiring update, the jobs are posted, we've got some really great candidates that I'm super excited about. So Chris has taken the lead on getting the interview scheduled, and as of right now, we've managed to get all of our interviews for next Wednesday. Appreciate our volunteers that are jumping in to help with that, so...
Are you sure you're ready?
Well, one of them is quite...
One of the seven of them are working, so...
One of them is quite...
Is my call, and they come in.
I hope, yeah. So, so, yeah, hiring's going well, and hopefully we have good news at the next council meeting. Any questions on the hiring update? All right. Chris, if you don't mind, if you could give the city hall remodel update?
So right now, we have the, the paint is done, the drywall's done, there's a window that's in there, they are putting in the seal tiles, ceiling tiles, the deckwork is completed, they were doing some more, like, today, when I went in there. We are currently revisiting the vestibule situation with the window, because it needed to be a sliding window, and so that's going in place. But other than that, I mean, you can visibly see the sightings, they're working on the siding, they should be able to start getting the weather to continue that throughout next week, so when I talk to that guy, I'll tell you his timeline is on that, so...
Is that the storefront coming, doing the whole...
Storefront is...
We didn't get a date in our last meeting.
We didn't get a date, he just said it might be late May, at this point. Yeah, he was hoping that he, he was originally hoping that he could get, get another avenue to go down to try to get it earlier, and that didn't work out, so we're still having to wait on that. So, but again, everything else is progressing, as I was assured, so hopefully it'll be in there sooner rather than later.
Will the grading on the north side affect any of this at all?
The grading won't necessarily affect what's going on in the build for city hall. The only concern I would have is, we have to secure the building at some point, and so that door's got to either go in, or be ripped up. So that's kind of where we're at right now. And again, just from a standpoint of, you know, I was going to invite some other people to the, when we go to, like, present the city hall, and do like a little ribbon cutting, where you guys are present, and we all do all that. So again, making it look nice would be a bonus to this situation, because I think, from what I've talked to, this is a pretty significant deal, even for talking to the community members, community members in the town, they're really excited for this change.
I do encourage you, I snuck in the other day, the guys were there working, I just excused myself and said, hey, I'd like to take a peek, so if the garage door's up, go in and take a look, and Chris can show you around as well. So what I'm hearing is there's potential we may need a special meeting for, once we figure out the best steps on the gradework. It all came in very quickly, and we've had some hard times lining up contractors to get some quotes. We do have a few more coming this week yet, so just be, be on alert, we may call a special and be able to move that forward. All right, 16D, park committee.
Park committee, so Xander is, this is our gentleman that is on the park committee, that is putting together the 3D model of kind of what it's going to look like. We met with the group that does performance boulders, I don't know if you're, any of you are familiar with this. Wikikiya has some of these there for climbing, and they're not actual rocks. They are, they are molded structures that go into place, and so the, the nice thing about having one of these in our park is that it makes the park extremely unique. And then on top of that, they had some other accessories that we might kind of look at to add. I am getting a lot of, I've got a vendor that's looking at the overall layout, as far as the grading work and getting all of that in place. We are looking at having one large pavilion, that pavilion will have a concession stand and then bathrooms on the backside, that'll be kind of closer to where the fire department is. And then we'll have another smaller pavilion that'll kind of have an octagonal shape, and that can be where we could either have bands playing, so everybody sits like this and looks up, or we can reverse everybody and they can put a movie on the firehouse wall. So that's kind of what we're looking at there. We've got the pickleball court portion of this ready to go, as far as what that's going to look like, and, and then we're also, also looking at the grant for getting the treats. So kind of a lot going on there. And then the space that is out here, I just spoke to that gentleman today, he's going to work out kind of a proposal, we kind of talked about what the space out by the new city hall would look like. So that's kind of where we're at right now.
So with the park, is this, well, you and I have talked about this, but I want to get it out for everybody to know, is this a one-year build, is it going to be over two or three years? What do you think of that?
So the really nice thing about meeting this group that talked about these performance boulders is, they've actually done this before, where they've pieced it out, and so I'm going to have more conversations with this gentleman to try to see what that looks like. The gist of what I can understand what he told me is basically, you buy the pavilion, you put that in. So, so, well, I back up. First, you get your land to look the way you want it. Then you buy the pavilion, you put that in. Then you buy, say, your other pavilion, you put that in. Then we come over and we say, we want to put in the pickleball court, and you just keep kind of adding to the park as you go, instead of trying to just do it all at once. And that might, not only from a financial standpoint, be able to spread it out a little bit, but then we, it also might make more sense for us trying to get exactly what we want, and have a design that we... for us trying to get exactly what we want, um and have a design that we would like. Once I get the final designs, I will present them, and I'll present the entire, like, scope first to my parks committee to get, get feedback, and gain feedback on that, then to the public, and, and you, you all at the same time, kinda work on it.
Um, on that, if you work with that company that kinda does the piece by piece, is there a commitment to stay with them over the course of the project, or?
No, because they, they piece mail out, like their boulders and their.
Okay.
Caterpillar, Sam, it's a suit. Remember the caterpillar from that book, The Caterpillar Eats the Hun?
The Hungry Caterpillar.
It looks just like. That it allows little kids to kinda play on it.
Oh, that's.
And I'm just, I, I'm, I don't know, I, I got a little excited when I saw it. But, things like that, 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 that the kids can play on, those are just pieces. And they even said, and he, he said this with, you know, a lot of enthusiasm, that you can piece it together yourself. So when we get some volunteers, we may actually be able to put some of the stuff together ourselves.
That makes me fun.
Yeah. And that would be there.
Better get the caterpillar.
So, um.
Well.
So.
I know you have a member in the park committee that's, he's actually going to school with the major in this. Is he able to do like three D rendering? That's my understanding, right? Or something three D-ish?
He's trying to get that, he's actually heading to Rome soon, so he's trying to get that to be before he was enrolled. And then, um, again, I will meet with the park committee once more next month. Um, and then I will then proceed to write the grant, so that that point, next month, I'm gonna be writing that grant that we're gonna try to get to compensate some of the money that we need to build this.
So timeline is, and I believe I already know this, we'd like to get like the grade work, the groundwork done this year, and then we'll start the building stuff next year.
Correct. I mean, realistically, that's probably what it's gonna be, just with everything else that we've got going on right now. Again, if I can find some way to move that up, great, but I just, I just feel like that, that's probably a good pace to do it at, um, and then go from there.
I think better let you go, city here.
Right.
Also that.
So, yeah, we're getting there.
Questions on the park? Alright, hearing none, we're gonna move on to final comments. I'll start with Counsel Trump.
Uh, it's just nice to see things happen as we, you know, plan and things are coming together.
To Shans? To West? Counsel Meyer.
Just to echo what Joe's saying, I mean, not everything has a nice shiny polish on it yet, but getting there, it's, it's good to see the progress.
All the preparation we've been doing for the last decade. Chris, any final comments?
I just wanna do a great handout to Dave Bozenberg, who got me, went all the way down to Williamsburg, got me my glass for my skid loader today, so. Again, thank you, and thanks everybody else for all your helping and doing for me, so I appreciate it.
Alright, second, I would seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by West.
Second.
Second by Trump. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, we are adjourned.